Okay, it looks like we have a quorum here. This is a transportation committee meeting, the City of Bloomington Common Council, Wednesday, July 22, 2020. We have one item on the agenda for tonight. It is ordinance 20-12. And we can, I'll introduce that. We can just go ahead in a discussion with that. So this is going to be an ordinance to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. So it's a lot of small amendments to the, to different chapters. And I think Stephen is going to put a link to the agenda on our chat, just so you can see all of the different amendments. Not going to read through them here, but I think we'll have a presentation on some of them. So tonight, the plan is to hear from city representatives about the amendments and then come to council for questions for city staff and then go to the public for comments. And then we can come back to discussing and potentially vote on a recommendation tonight or decide if another meeting is in order. So tonight, I think from the administration, we have Amir Farschi, our long-range planner, and Beth Rosenbarger, our planning services manager. So I understand you two are going to be giving a brief overview of this. Is that right?
Yes.
Hi, this is, oh, go ahead, Amir. Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to present. Hello, this is Amir Farschi, long-range planner. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay, the memo and the ordinance proposes various amendments to Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Title 15 is a set of the code subject to frequent change and revisions. These proposals are the result of feedback from Traffic Commission, the Parking Commission, the Planning and Transportation Department, the Legal Department, and Parking Enforcement. The staff has presented Title 15 changes at least once, one time a year in July or August for the past, for the last few years. And the staff is in the process of working with the Office of the Mayor and the Council Office to propose a schedule to present Title 15 changes more than one time a year, beginning 2021. The purpose of these recommendations is to address issues that have come to staff attention, the public requests, the commission's recommendations, and to formally implement a number of 180-day orders. Some items are related to safety issues, improving visibility for people, pedestrian and bicyclists' safety, traffic calming, and housekeeping changes. A group of items removes redundancies created when ordinance 18-26 added codifications without deleting as necessary. And the majority of these items were vetted by the Traffic Commission, Parking Commission, and Bicycle and Pedestrian and Safety Commission in the past year. The details and maps are included in the packet. And the ordinance makes the following changes. It changes a street name from Trades Street and Trades St. to Maker Way. It adds and removes various no-parking zones. It adds a number of loading zones. It adds parking restrictions for motorcycles and mopeds. It adds garage parking space reserved for electric vehicles. It changes a limited parking zone. It removes and adds some speed limits. It adds and changed some multi-stop intersections. It adds one signalized intersection. It removes one street from one-way street section of the code. It adds a temporary visitor parking. And it adds some pay-by-phone zones. And let me give you some information about pay-by-phone. The pay-by-phone mobile app, Park Mobile, which may be downloaded to a smart device, allows users to make payments and assert a meter on any smart device or call the number on the phone and let the time run until the user manually stops the time count. And the free app makes it easy to pay for parking without running back to feed the meter. And we received some questions from the transportation committee. And I sent their staff's answer to Councilmember Rosenbarger this afternoon. And the staff can answer your questions about each item. Let me introduce the staff who are in this Zoom meeting. Neve Koper, interim Transportation and Traffic Engineer. Michelle Wall, Parking Services Director. Brian Cox, Parking Enforcement Manager. Beth Rosenbarger, Planning Services Manager. And Scott Robinson, Assistant Director of Planning and Transportation. And if you have any questions about any of these items, the staff happy to answer those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to questions from committee members. Mr. Rollin?
Well, actually, rather than ask questions, I'd like to get a response to some of the questions that we asked in advance on the behalf of staff. Do you have any questions? Or do you have any answers to the questions that we posed in writing? I see a number of them.
Sorry, you're asking, okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I was just trying to clarify, Steve. You're asking if staff wants to discuss our question?
The point of us writing questions in advance was to give them a chance to prepare to answer them, you know, some of the concerns we have here. Could you start answering these questions? Like, for example, on 15th Street, the proposal is to add no parking on the north side on a portion west of Indiana Avenue. There's parking allowed on the south side.
Yes, we are happy to go over the answers. I sent the written answers to Councilmember Rosenbarger this afternoon. But we'll have to talk about them. For that question you asked, yeah, yes, parking is allowed.
The thing, Mr. Farschi, the problem is that you sent the answers this afternoon, but there's hardly any time to read them. So, you know, we'd like to discuss them.
Sure. Yeah, for the first question, 15th Street, parking is allowed on the south side of 15th Street from Indiana to the gravel 1280 feet west of Indiana. And this request originated from the City of Bloomington Sanitation Department. And it was reported that cars parked along the north and south side of East 15th Street, making it impossible for a trash truck to get through. And this condition also impedes the passage of emergency vehicle. And based on 180-day order 19-01, the staff recommended that the parking be restricted. We are signageing that location. So the main reason was for the emergency vehicle access. And I can show you the map of that location. If that helps. May I share my screen?
You should be able to. I think you're a co-host. So if you go to share screen, let me know if you have any problems. But it should give you the option to share whatever you need to.
Let me try. Could you see my screen?
Yes, it's coming up now.
Yeah, so we are talking about this location. And Neil Koper is here and can provide more information. Yeah, the staff proposed this section to be no parking because the street cannot support parking on both sides due to the narrow width. And it can be challenging for emergency vehicles and trash pickup to get through this section.
Can I ask, why is it emergency? Because it's temporary and this would codify it to be permanently no parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question about this case? None? And do you want me to go over all answers to the questions? Because...
I mean, I guess that's up to the individual askers of the questions.
Yeah, there are six pages. I'm happy to go over all of them. Up to you.
It would, it may be help if you showed us images and talked about them without necessarily reading the entire answer, just summarizing them so we can sort of see what some of the questions are visually. That's my thought.
Sure, I can do that. The second question is about 12th Street, on south side of 12th Street, from Illinois Street to Summit Street. And let me find that section. The question is, it looks like on Google Map that there is enough room for parking on both sides of the street in this area between Illinois and Summit. Why the staff proposing no parking on the south side? You know, this, let me see if I have this question. Yeah, here it is. And, you know, our answer is the street currently has no parking signs on the south side. The previous Title 15 ordinance, 18-26, removed this codification. But the intent was only to remove the restrictions between Summit and Monroe, not between Illinois and Summit, this section. And the restriction between Summit and Monroe was removed because the Boys and Girls Club constructed inset parking space on the south side of the street. 12th Street is not large enough to have parking on both sides of the street while maintaining adequate width for two-way traffic. While that condition is allowed in some contexts, the intent of this update is simply to correct a mistake in a previous ordinance and to reflect the intent of the Traffic Commission and council at that. So, let's see. And the next question is about Woodlawn Avenue. The question is, is the goal to alternate parking between the east and west side of the street in order to stop traffic? Let me find that map. You know, our answer is the primary goal is to improve visibility for people turning onto Woodlawn from university, this section. Potential speed reductions and sight increase in the overall number of available on-street parking spaces are secondary benefit. So, and safety issues was the main concern for changing parking from one side of the street to the other side of the street. And the next question is, how do no-parking zones impact parking and convenience? What is the purpose of most of these additional zones? The answer is, it varies case by case. But generally, some streets cannot support parking on both sides of the street due to the street's narrow width, which makes access for emergency vehicles, trash trucks, and others challenging. Safety issues, line-of-sight, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and traffic calming are other important items in general. The next question is, in the staff memo, it says, "Planning and transportation issued 180-day order in August 2019. It's been nearly a year since then. Why have these changes not come to council earlier?" I talked about this a little bit at the beginning of my presentation. And our answer is, staff has presented Title 15 changes at least one time a year in July or August of the last few years. The staff is in the process of working with the Office of the Mayor and Council Office to propose a schedule to present Title 15 changes more than one time a year the last few years. The council's schedule has been very busy with the other planning and transportation initiatives like comprehensive plan, transportation plan, and UDO, in addition to other council business. The planning and transportation also typically begins Title 15 requests through one or more boards and commissions. And this waiting process can add additional time before requests are being considered by council. And finally, COVID-19 pandemic has delayed some of the initiatives in the process while giving priority to more urgent items for the council. And while the 180-day order may be temporarily be nature or an interim step and the council can consider changes to Title 15, the reality is, these items may take more than 180 days due to the reasons stated above, simply the timing of the order. And the goal is to bring more, one or more Title 15 updates per year. We are proposing three updates, but we should work with the council office and the Office of the Mayor.
So I have a question about that.
Sure.
So, since it's called a 180-day order, do we get into legal problems that we... I mean, can we still enforce a 180-day order if it's been 275 days?
I believe some staff, like the Transportation and Traffic Engineer, can reissue the 180-day order if needed.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, this is because we want to have two or three Title 15 presentations for the council to avoid that problem. Any other question about that?
No, do you, committee members, do you want to continue going through these questions? Or would you like to, if you want to pinpoint some to ask more follow-ups potentially instead of... Mr. Rollin?
I mean, I, I've been writing down some follow-up questions I have. But I don't know whether to interrupt after each one or to wait until he's done presenting. I'm sort of ambivalent, whatever the committee would prefer.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should just go ahead and do what's on the table. So I think just ask as we're discussing. That's what I think.
I don't understand.
I think you should just ask your questions as we're talking about a specific question.
Okay. Well, I want to address this question then. I mean, we used to have 90-day orders. And then we made them into 180-day orders because that was more practical. And now we're looking at 270-day. You know, effectively, we're testing things for nine months at a time. When does it end? Like, I mean, how long should we give permission to have for Public Works or Planning to create a temporary situation that's not codified? What's staff's thinking?
You know, the staff talked about this issue. And, you know, honestly, this is because we are proposing two or three times of Title 15 changes to bring those items to council. You know, it's easier for a staff to wrap things up two or three times a year and bring those to council. And, you know, with the venture of 180-day order, I believe the purpose of these orders in most cases are for safety issues. For example, for something like the pay-by-phone zone that we want to charge money, it's not possible to issue 180-day orders for those and stuff. And, go ahead.
No, no, of course, Fisher thought.
And, yeah, we discussed it in the parking team meeting. And the legal department had some conversation with the council office. And we are working with the Office of the Mayor to find good times, three times a year.
Well, I'd like to suggest, sorry, go ahead.
And we are working on that. Yeah, it's a staff preference to bring those more often to council.
I'd like to suggest an idea that's occurred to me while you were speaking. There is precedent in various boards and commissions, both statutory and non, for a kind of, a different kind of business. I have, I am quite familiar with the challenge of bringing a Title 15 ordinance change. And that they tend to be omnibus changes. So we have a bunch of different ones here at the same time. I wonder if, for less than controversial changes, the council, if staff wouldn't benefit from the council thinking about a different process for handling changes, kind of in the same way that, say, the Board of Parks Commissioners handles payroll and claims or Public Works. You know, that if we were to create a process where we would handle, you know, basic changes on a more regular basis so that, you know, I mean, we can, we can create some kind of exceptional, you know... I mean, I know we need to change code. I know it needs to be ordinance. But maybe we could make smaller, more frequent ones that are just like, we handle them in 20 minutes at a regular session, like, like so many nominations or reports. Maybe that would make everyone's work easier. I wonder if staff has any thought about that? Because I, for one, am willing to try to develop a different process so that we don't have to worry about log jams, you know, big Title 15 changes. What would staff say to that?
Hello, this is Beth Rosenbarger. I guess I'm going to answer your question. But first, I'll say, you know, I don't think we... Or I guess I could just say, like, I am sorry that we haven't had a Title 15 update sooner and that we don't want to have 270-day orders. We want to have 180-day orders. And what we, in all honesty, there's just been so many that have piled up that right now, we're like, well, we have to deal with what is here. And then we want to propose for 2021 that there is a minimum, just like an actual planned schedule is more helpful than even doing them as they come up. I think because there are, it's always about when we draw the line. Because I'm sure if we wait another two weeks, we'll have more Title 15 changes that we want to do. And two weeks after that, we'll have more. So it's more like a filing deadline and just trying to draw those across the year. I don't know about a shorter process because sometimes there's some help in combining things if we're doing multiple no-parking zones all at one time or they're for similar reasons. You know, we're always going to be needing to write a memo and a staff report and make maps. So I can see how it'd be shorter. Anyway, I am more on board with a set timeline.
All I'm saying, you know, this would take some development. But the point is that we can, I mean, the frequency or the sheer number of changes to be made in Title 15 compares, for example, to parks which rarely has legislation coming before us. And it seems to me that, you know, it's in everyone's interest, councils', staff's', the public's' interests for us to develop a, I'm trying to think of the right word for it, but an expedited process for nominal changes to Title 15. You know, like that we schedule on the agenda like we schedule reports, you know? And that it has sort of a preclearance as long as it meets certain criteria that is not particularly complicated. As long as there's no objection, by unanimous consent, we can approve certain, you know, nominal changes. And like, I'm not, I'm not looking to create more work. If anything, what I want to do would be to find a way to reduce the amount of effort it takes to do such changes that staff would have to do. So, you know, if staff doesn't see that as a benefit, then I'm not going to pursue it. But I think that it's something that procedurally, as a council, we can decide to do. So that's what I'm offering here. At least my willingness to work towards that.
This is Scott Robinson. I just would welcome any opportunity to streamline the process that council could see. You know, we try to package what we believe is our non-controversial amendments. I know there seem to be a lot in this ordinance that you're considering tonight. But we'd certainly welcome a process that would streamline that effort. And we tried to pull out...
If we could talk about it at some future date.
Yeah, certainly welcome that opportunity. Thank you.
I'll add one note. Sorry, another element of it is we staff three commissions that we take all of the amendments to. And so taking it to three commissions instead of maybe a more united transportation commission takes a lot longer, especially when they... What if a commission asks for changes? What if only one commission asks for changes and the other two commissions feel great about it? Do we make those edits? I mean, we decide a staff, do we then take it back? And then even if we take it back to the commission, we're talking about adding a month when, if it's a 180-day order, that is going to make it closer to expiring. So like, even the pre-council process is honestly part of the challenge that adds time, of course. But I'll let us keep going, sorry.
Okay, are we ready to move on from that question?
I am.
Okay, so I mean, I'm just, okay, I'm just scrolling through here. Just looking at other questions. We want to talk at all about motorcycle and moped parking. Does anyone have questions with that? I guess my only question there is, okay, so currently, we don't have any designated spaces for motorcycles and mopeds in our garages or our city lots. I just, I'm wondering, like, is this the type of transportation we want to encourage? Is it like a more equitable thing? It seems climate-friendly to me to encourage people to be in mopeds. I mean, thinking about Spain, people are on mopeds all the time instead of cars. I think that's great. So, I mean, I don't know. Do we have any sort of strategy on that? Or is that something we encourage here? I guess potentially this might help encourage some moped use. Just wondering about that in terms of transportation strategy.
Michelle, would you talk about this question? I think Michelle Wall, the Parking Services Director, and Ryan Cox, Parking Enforcement Manager, are here.
Okay, well, while maybe somebody is unmuting in addition to do we, are motorcycles and mopeds things we want to encourage? I also want to ask, I think it was in the notes, and look, I can't find it in our question, but that motorcycles and mopeds aren't allowed to park in a regular parking spot. Is that correct?
You know, right now, they can park wherever... You know, right now they can park wherever they want, but staff is proposing only for parking garages that we designate some specific parking spots in the first level of parking garages that with signage on the first level that it can be more appropriate for motorcycles and mopeds to find those parking spaces if they cannot find any space on the street. And there are some kind of, I believe, safety issues that and if a motorcycle park in a parking space for cars next to cars, it may cause some damages to cars in some cases. So we are proposing that having a kind of consistent parking spaces on the first floor of, first level of parking garages in all of city parking garages for motorcycles to park there.
Okay, okay. I mean, that makes sense to me. And I guess I think, I mean, cars also cause damage when they park next to other cars, but we let that happen, you know? So that seems strange, but I guess I like the idea of encouraging motorcycles and mopeds and they can park at any metered spot. Is that correct?
Yes, this is Michelle. I apologize. I was, sorry, Amir, I was muted and I couldn't unmute.
So.
No problem.
I apologize. One of the things with, this came out of a recommendation, I believe, from Rayanne. We had a motorcycle parked in a bike rack and we do not currently have any ordinance to say a motorcycle can't park in a bike rack. And then it opened up the conversation about motorcycles and mopeds. Amir is exactly correct. They can park and they can park one, two, three, however many they can fit in a space as long as that meter is paid on the street. We don't care. But the conversation came up after they park, if we are not going to allow them to park in a bike rack, where can they park? And so that's when I came up with the idea of allowing designated spaces in the garages. Currently, they can park in any space in the garage, but for visibility purposes and the danger of people not seeing them through the drive lanes, I've talked to my garage manager and we're willing to put two or three spaces in, in the garages on a little flat surface to accommodate these and designate those spaces for them. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't unmute either. I had to send a chat. Yes, most of our motors, our bicycle racks are on the sidewalk. So a motorized, like a motorcycle or e-bike or something, or a moped would literally have to travel on the sidewalk to access these bike racks. And that's going to be a pedestrian hazard right there. That was another reason.
And that was Rayanne Cox, just for the record.
I'm sorry. This is Rayanne Cox. Thank you.
Councilmember Volan, do you have a question?
Yeah. I have a question about the nature of the spaces. Are they going to be narrower so that more can be put in? Or, you know, smaller for motorcycles, even smaller for mopeds? Or are they just going to be car sized spaces that are signed for multiple? Like, will there be a designated space for each cycle? What's your thought on that?
Thanks. This is Michelle. Thanks, Steve. The the, the thought process is, is this, if we can make a regular vehicle space accommodate with designated signs, as long as they're paying the, the fee in the garages, if we have three signs and three spaces, it can park six, it can park eight. We're just giving them an area so they're designated and they're visible on the first floor. So no, they're not going to be smaller spaces, but we can accommodate as many bikes, motorcycles, sorry, that can fit in that space. Is that clear?
You see why, yeah, sure. You see why I asked though. I mean, like, if, if, you know, this, if the lines aren't delineated, then you know, maybe you have inconsiderate motorcyclists or moped riders who, you know, like park willy nilly, make it hard for somebody to get out. I don't know. This is not a big deal. I just was wondering whether you were thinking about.
This is Rayanne Cox. They're parking, you know, willy nilly now on the sidewalks. They need to have somewhere to park, like a designated space to park.
That's what I'm asking.
There, yeah, there is a on-street metered parking space for motorcycles. It's on the south side of the courthouse on one hundred West Kirkwood. It's at the northwest corner. The reason that was created is the, this space was too narrow for an actual vehicle. So when we put in the meters in two thousand thirteen, we designated that space and it's been signed a motorcycle parking space. I rarely see any motorcycles there.
Maybe we should become bike parking.
So all, um, I asked my garage manager before, when we were in discussions about motorcycle parking. We may get three to five a year. So when we talk about this issue just for motorcycles, three to five is what he has currently parking in the garages. And that's of course during, you know, the summer months, maybe a little bit of the fall. But we're dealing with about three to five motorcycles in the garages.
Yes, this is Rayanne. I have seen motorcycles park several in one space in front of bubs in the summertime. But normally around town, you really don't see many motorcycles.
Okay, well, I mean, it seems like a solution for not too, not too big a problem. Thank you.
Okay, other questions from council members to staff? I'm looking through them really quickly to see if I want to touch on any that I asked. Okay, council member Volan?
I, I have one. I wanted to go back to a, a point that I didn't get a chance to ask before about no parking zones. I, I am encouraged by some, like, for example, the provision of parking on wood lawn to slow, slow traffic down and to improve sightlines and the like, although I don't quite get how that does that, but I guess I'll need to look at it in person. But in a couple of other examples, it was cited that emergency vehicles and trash trucks were the primary reason and secondary reasons were pedestrian and bike safety and traffic calming for taking parking out of a, of a, of a street because two lane traffic would be too narrow. Now, I traverse Grant Street between Second and Smith all the time. And it's a really good example of a street that, that has one lane of parking on it, but still two-way traffic. And anybody who navigates that block knows that, well, it's technically two-way, but you better take it really slow to make sure you don't hit anybody. And I don't see why that presumption doesn't apply to other streets as well. Why are we so worried about two-way traffic that we take parking out that would slow traffic down? You know, and why is it that specifically we prioritize emergency vehicles and trash trucks slightly over pedestrian and bike safety and traffic calming? I mean, the, the latter are much more frequent users as streets and the former, much more frequent. What would staff say to that?
Neil, could you talk about?
I think they, I'm unmuted now. Yeah, I'll, I'll start on that. So one of the responses earlier, I think it was for West Twelfth Street. I think the question specifically mentioned or asked whether the, you know, the street was wide enough to support it and that's why it was noted in there. Really what was happening on Twelfth was we were trying to put it back to what was originally intended. That was an error from a previous ordinance. For most of these where parking.
I recall that, no, yeah.
And references made to emergency service vehicles. You know, I want to note that we're not, we're not like going out looking for opportunities where we can restrict parking because it's narrow. We, you know, in general, I agree that there are benefits to having narrow streets. We see the traffic calming benefits of that. But we, when we get complaints that, you know, an ambulance literally can't fit down a street in order, you know, to get to somebody's house, that's something that we do take seriously. So when we, you know, we kind of rely on complaints for this type of thing where, you know, it's literally a vehicle can't get down the street, these larger vehicles. We do see that as a problem. You know, I think our code currently reads that you're required to leave twelve feet of clear space in order to legally park on the street anyway. So if these ever come up, they're already breaking, you know, they're already violating a code. So that, that's where these are coming into play is where kind of those more extreme examples where you actually can't get down the street.
I mean, because I would also say that I'm not looking to put parking on the street just for the sake of traffic calming anymore than you're looking to take it off of emergency vehicles. I, I'm trying to strike a balance too, but I, I would just counter that, is it that the emergency vehicle driver can't get down the street or simply can't do it at the speed to which they're accustomed? I mean, if they can inch their way through, you know, again, a vehicle operating at a high, at, at, at speed is, is inherently less safe than a vehicle that's operating at a lower speed. How would you answer that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's true, of course. We want our vehicles to be traveling, you know, to not be speeding on the streets. You know, you mentioned striking a balance and it does get a bit tricky when you're talking about an ambulance or a fire truck where, you know, we, we don't design our streets so that they can go as fast as they can anywhere they want to. But we do try to design them so that they can get through in a reasonable manner. So with those vehicles, you know, they talk about.
I appreciate that answer and yeah, so I, I guess that the word reasonable is something we might eventually have to define, but I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the parking on Rogers from Third all the way up to Eleventh. There seems to be like some, no new parking zones. It's a little bit, I'm just a little confused as to what is happening with parking on Rogers. And it seems to be retroactive in most cases, so especially between Tenth and Eleventh. I was, I didn't know what was happening. And that the map really didn't help me because it was so small.
I can, I can take that. This is Neil Copper again. There's an existing codification from Rogers all the way from Third to Thirteenth Street that restricts parking on the east side of the street. That's Third to Thirteenth. What we want to do is between Tenth and Eleventh Street, we want to switch parking from the west side to the east side. So it used to be allowed on the west. We want to allow it on the east side. So that falls right in the middle of that long stretch of Third to Thirteenth that is currently codified as no parking. So what you see in, in the ordinance is first we remove the Third to Thirteenth. Then we put back Third to Tenth and we put back Eleventh to Thirteenth. And then we restrict parking on the west side from Tenth to Eleventh. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that helps a lot. But looking at, and I need to go look at it in person, but on Rogers between Tenth and Eleventh, it seems wide enough to have parking on both sides. Is, is there a bike lane there or something that takes up additional space?
There is. There's a, I believe it's just a northbound bike lane. I'd have to check too, but there is a bike lane taking up some of the space there.
So it looks like there's the bike lane and then to the east, so it is a northbound bike lane. But then to the east of that bike lane, there's, there's additional space or am I seeing a, a buffer next to the bike lane?
So starting at, starting at the eastern curb, there's a parking lane and then the northbound bike lane, then the northbound motor vehicle lane, and then the southbound motor vehicle lane.
Oh, okay. So there is already parking on the east side of Rogers.
Correct. That was installed with the infrastructure improvements with the Trades District.
So that's, that's the ninety day order. I mean, that's the hundred eighty day order.
Correct. Parking used to be on the west side there and that order changed it to the east side to coincide with the restriping.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Copper?
Hi.
Can I ask a question? The changes are based on, tell, tell, tell me how you arrive at the changes, just kind of briefly.
The changes for Rogers Street?
Just the changes for all these changes we're talking about.
I think there's a large variety. A lot of these originate as requests from residents or complaints that say, you know, I'm concerned about this thing. And then we go take a look. Sometimes it goes through Traffic Commission or Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission. Sometimes there are things that we just find on our own that staff observes or we find through crash data or something like that. Yeah, I mean, there, as you can see, there's a whole number of different, different kinds of things in here, so they don't always come the same way.
And then as a, as a staff, you reach a consensus on the changes for the title fifteen?
Yeah, staff does an evaluation depending on what the, what the request is. And then if it requires a change to title fifteen, we'll take it also through a commission. For example, Traffic Commission. If it's something that, you know, either it's already happened or we consider it, you know, urgent, well, we can do a hundred and eighty day order to implement it in the near term. And if not, we just put it on the list for title fifteen updates so we can bring it before council.
Thank you, Mr. Copper. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay, other questions from council members? I, I would like to talk about visitor permits a little bit. I'm new to this whole program, so I'm trying to get used to the neighborhood parking zone permit program. And so some of us asked why, you know, a visitor permit was only for one block, what makes a block? And staff answered that a block is four sides and that we limit the scope of the visitor permit from the residents because students try to park there and go to school. Okay, so that makes sense. But then one said, okay. Current visitor permit program is one visitor permit per household for the properties that are eligible for the neighborhood parking zone permit. And I just wanted to ask which properties are eligible for those visitor permits?
Hi, this is Michelle. I need, I need to clear something up so everybody's clear. A visitor permit, and I think Councilwoman Piedmont Smith had asked this for me to clear it up if I was doing a discussion or a presentation. So right now, a resident can get multiple permits per vehicle registration. And that is also called a homeowner, okay? And they can get one visitor permit. The tenants can get one vehicle registration. They can register one car. And with the shared capacity of the unit, so let's say they have four, they can get one visitor permit. So that is currently the neighborhood permit, residential permit program, okay? What I'm proposing is a temporary visitor permit hang tag. So I just need your clarification to make sure that, that when I answer your question, that I'm, I'm accurate in explaining what your, what your question is.
Okay, yes, I, this is complicated to me. So Councilmember Volan, do you want to?
Yeah, so I think that what Ms. Wall is trying to say is that up until now, we've only offered annual permits. And each person in an eligible household can get a permit for their car and the household itself can get one annual visitor permit. And what Parking Services is proposing now is a new temporary permit where you pay by the day. And like the one day cost for a permit is like eleven dollars. So it's in no way cheap or subsidized, but it does allow, especially in Zone Six, for example, where I've had constituents complain about being unable to visit their family member because it's enforced several nights a week. This is a way where they can, especially if they're coming from out of town, they can plan to park overnight in a street that's often left. they can plan to park overnight on a street that's often left vacant because of the new zone. So, but this solution that she's proposing is good across all neighborhood zones. So in other words, it's like, correct me if I'm wrong, it's $11 for a day, 55 for a week and 110 for two weeks. So it's, it's in no way subsidized. It actually, it's all but the cost of parking at a meter. It's only slightly less expensive than if there was a meter in the street. But it does actually allow somebody to park there temporarily over the matter of one day or a few days. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. And so any resident in any zone can get this daily, one week or two weeks visitor permit. Do you just have to show your, like a proof of address or something?
Ms. Wall, is that right?
Yes, they can get anybody that's in that zone. So they physically have to live in that zone and provide who they're visiting. So let's say that someone lives in a zone and let's say Zone 5, and they request a permit. We're going to say, okay, who are you visiting in that zone? They do have to provide an address of who they're visiting. So we can make sure that we give them the proper zone of where they're going.
Yes, that makes sense. That makes total sense.
It is $11 a day, 55 for a week. And we had to make it seven days for the fact that Garden Hill is a different enforcement time. It incorporates all seven days and then 110 for a month.
Wait, 110 is for two weeks, right?
Right. If I can just add that, you know, years ago, I knew of people who would use the visitor permit as a de facto extra neighborhood zone permit as though it were a regular permit. And that this solution, I think, is a much more elegant solution to the actual task of hosting a visitor. So that's why I'm, I'm pleased to see it here for our consideration. But it's different than, I mean, anybody who has an impression like I used to of the old visitor permit, which was an annual permit. This is not, this is a one day, one week or two week permit that you pay virtually meter prices for. But it, it, it can be used in any neighborhood parking zone. It's not limited to one. I mean, rather, it can be bought in any zone. As well as right that you have to, to buy it for a particular zone. But it's
The one you live in.
Eligible, yeah, it's eligible in any, well, actually, if somebody's visiting you, you don't have to go get the permit. Your friend can go buy it and you tell them, I live in Zone 6, so they'll go get a Zone 6 permit. I think that's, you know, like I, I don't have to, if, if a friend is visiting me, I'm not the one who has to go down to City Hall and get the permit, right? My friend can do it. All you have to do, all that friend has to do is say, my person I'm visiting lives in Zone 1, say, and you'll sell them a Zone 1 permit. Is that right as well?
That is correct, Councilman. But, and they will have to do it now, of course, virtually because, and they just have to provide us the address.
That's fine. Yeah, so I think it's a good solution.
Yeah, I like this idea. I like that it doesn't distinguish between renter or homeowner and anyone can get this permit as long as you live in the, the temporary visitor permit, as long as you live in a zone. I think at some point in the future, I, I would like to revisit or visit for me for the first time, the, the program as a whole, because I think parts of it are a little a little unequal for homeowners versus renters. And I'd like to just take a look at that, I think, down the road at some point.
Yeah, this is Michelle. Yeah, this is a trial program. So if it is approved, we will bring the data necessary for you guys to see if it was successful, who's actually buying the tags. And and as you can see, thanks, Amir, for putting up the slide. We have created, if this is passed, we have created a new temporary tag to indicate the date of purchase. So the enforcement officers will have a better look at the pass and make sure that they're using it appropriately and the system is not abused. But we will bring it to council in a year.
Okay, that's wonderful. I think I just have one more follow-up question. So I know that some apartment buildings have parking. So when we're talking about apartment buildings, we're talking about five plus units, right? And some have parking with them, but not all have visitor spots in that parking. So somebody in a, in an apartment building can still get one of these visitor, temporary visitor permits?
That is correct. And one of the things I heard, of course, Councilwoman Volan has already said that Garden Hill, that's where I got a lot of these complaints, that there was so much parking, but they were not eligible to buy a parking permit. And their building or their unit did not sell parking either. So then they didn't have a place for their mom to come visit. They didn't have a place for a friend to come down for a weekend. And then if they were eligible, it went to the flip side. They had a parking space with the unit, but nobody can visit them in the zone because there was no place for them to park.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Complicated. Okay, Councilmember Volan?
Well, while we're on this subject, I, I want to emphasize the idea that the, the new proposal for temporary visitor permits, again, applies in all the zones. That it's good across, it can be done in any zone in the city. What is not in this, in legislation as presented, which I'm planning to bring as an amendment, which I want the committee to see on August 5th, is a second new program, which is to create a new price for Zone 6 permits only. That would allow somebody who doesn't live and who, who, who lives in a residence that doesn't qualify for a permit because it's five units or more, to be able to buy a permit. So it's the same permit, but a higher price. And that price would be pegged to double the all-zone rate. So roughly, I think the all-zone permit is going to be 106 this year, so these would be $212. But unlike buying a series of temporary visitor permits and having them sent to you in the mail, a resident of an apartment building could in fact buy a permit for the year, but they'd be paying a premium for it. And secondly, the, the dollars above the 46 that normally go to an annual neighborhood zone permit would go into a new fund created to improve public works in Zone 6, to build sidewalks, repair curbs and so on. And this notion is called a parking benefit district. And the amendment I'm proposing would create the new funds to hold those dollars that would then be spendable only in Zone 6. The reason I haven't brought it today is because it's on the agenda for the Parking Commission tomorrow. And they're due to, to, to make a vote on it. And I'm hoping to bring it to the committee in time for it to consider. But I wanted to preview it now, just to say that right now, there are about 240 spaces in Zone 6. And only 97 permits were sold under the new program last year. And the streets were quite empty. So we, we sort of over-regulated it. And this is a way to, to deregulate it some. It will allow people to buy parking where they couldn't before. So I hope that it'll find favor with the committee. Anyway, I just wanted to preview that. The details will be coming in the packet for the August 5th meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And happy to answer questions if anybody hasn't, but it might be better to wait until August 5th.
Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, so I didn't ask this question, but it's a good one about the loading zones. That, so we're adding several new parking spaces as loading zones. And it's not clear to me either from the ordinance itself nor from the answers to the question whether the new ones that we are adding are 24 hours or whether they are less than 24 hours. Can somebody respond to that?
Regarding the loading zones, let me find S H R. I believe most of them are 24/7. But cannot find it. Yeah, here it is. Michelle, for the loading zones on First Avenue on, actually, on 13th Street in front of the IU Art Annex. I believe they are 8 to 5, Monday through Friday.
That is correct, Amir.
Yeah. But the other ones are 24 hour, seven days a week.
This is Ryan. There are different ones. We have some in the metered areas that are 8 to 5. And then after 5 o'clock until 9 o'clock, they're regular parking spaces. So there's all different times of part of loading zones. They're just not all, all of them's not 24/7.
I believe a council member is asking for the new ones.
Yes, they're 8 to 5, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, it is too.
All of these?
There's only two.
Only these two. The first one, fourth one and fifth one are 24/7. But these two are Monday through Friday. And I can show you on the map.
So 13th Street, those are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, is that what you said?
Yes. I can show you them.
It looks like.
These two are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5.
I looked at the actual section of city code, the Schedule O. And it looks like if it's not 24/7, it needs to say that in the text of that, of that the name of the loading.
Right, because, because doesn't the code say all loading zones are 24 hours?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah.
So if there are two here in the, in the ordinance we're considering tonight that are less than 24 hours, that needs to be noted.
Sure, yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, I apologize for that error. Yeah, they should be noted.
Hi, we're making a list so that we can, I'm not sure if these will have to be amendments, but that we can keep track and make those changes for the next meeting as well. Sorry, this is Beth Rosenbarger. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Well, actually.
Yeah, we're still working on that one. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I just follow up? So, um, on, when you make the decision as to whether a loading zone will be 24/7 or more limited, what do you base that on?
This, this is Ryan. If I can speak to the ones that are in the metered spaces downtown. We made them so businesses could load and unload during the day. Because that's when most delivery drivers come along. And it, from evening hours at 5 to 9, it can be a regular parking space. So the restaurants and stuff can, the businesses can have regular parking and the loading zone will be setting empty. A good example is on 400 East Kirkwood in front of Greetings. 8 to 5, Monday through Saturday, it's Monday through Friday, it's a loading zone. In the evenings, people can park there and pay the meter and go to Nick's or Kilroy's or anywhere.
So what about the ones like on North Madison, Feline, Kinzer Pike? Why are those 24/7?
I would have to research those. I can't answer to that without doing more research on those specific ones.
Yeah, I would appreciate some more information there.
I can get you more information.
Thanks.
I wonder if we would want code to be updated to say loading zones are 5 to 5 unless noted kind of thing where hotels, I mean, I was, I'm just trying to think of spaces that might need 24 hours a day where people are pulling up for something. I can really only think about hotels, but I this is off the top of my head.
Sorry, this is Ryan again. The only problem with that is there's no staff to enforce it. 24/7.
Oh, so are you saying like most of ours aren't labeled as 24/7 right now, even though?
There are different ones all over town. Again, there's different ones that are metered and
Yeah.
in different places, but if you want something enforced between 1 o'clock in the morning and 4 o'clock, there's no staff to do that.
I mean, for me, I'm mostly okay with turning loading zones into parking in the evenings and things when deliveries are finished. So yeah, like the idea of them, you know, doubling as a loading zone and then a parking spot later on.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions from council members? I mean, Councilmember Volan, I, you know, I want to discuss your amendment at some point. I don't necessarily know that we need to get into it tonight because it is so late.
No, I was, I was going to say that I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Oh, okay. I will just say one more thing.
I feel, I feel like I've reached.
Yeah, is it late or something? I would just say, in general, I am very apprehensive to create a new permit that costs more for someone living in an apartment than it does for someone living in a home. So that is a big hesitancy for me with your amendment and of course, happy to talk about it. At some point, maybe brainstorm on some ideas, potentially, you know, raising a permit, the permit for a first car. Maybe raising a permit for a second car. I mean, I don't have great answers right now, but I want to think about it.
Happy to talk about it over the next two weeks.
Okay.
I would encourage those who are interested in that to watch the Parking Commission tomorrow at 5:30 where we'll talk about it.
Sounds like a fun event. Okay, so I think if staff feels finished and council members have questions, we can open it to the public for comment. Okay, so what we do now is just raise your hand if you'd like to say anything. I think we've mostly got staff and council members on this call. And we'll take you off mute and give you five minutes to comment. Okay. So it seems like we don't have any public comment. And then any other comments from council members? Okay, so what we want to talk about is next steps, right? Do we do, what do, what do we think? Do we want to vote on a recommendation for this now? Do we want to wait for staff to update the amendments and then for the, for Councilmember Volan's amendment to get through Parking Commission? Yes, Councilmember Volan.
I would simply suggest we don't need to take any action tonight. The committee has until August 12th to return a report to the full council. We have a meeting scheduled for August 5th. You know, you can simply adjourn once you feel satisfied that everyone has, has had their say for the evening. But it sounds like, as you say, that there's been, there's enough outstanding questions that we're going to want to meet again on August 5th.
Okay. And I think Ms. Wall would like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. I thank everyone for taking the time to look over our recommendations and the staff report. I do want to mention that the data that I bring out, we just have to understand that we're under COVID. And some of the streets might be barren these zones. That's another reason I think it's really important that we roll it out now, see the participation level of the temporary permit. But, Ada, Ms. Rosenbarger, you talked about the data. It might not be where we want it to be next year. Ada, Ms. Rosenbarger, you talked about the data, it might not be where we want it to be next year, just because of COVID, so I just wanted. To make sure that you understand, I'm going to track it, but knowing that this is a, you know, an odd time for us, not normal. That we have not seen the normal registrations and parking zones as of yet, I've just started the online process. And, or the garages, so I just wanted to make sure that. Recognized, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you so much for being here. Okay, so I think our next steps will be to reconvene on August 5th, time probably to be determined later on, once we know what's happening that evening. And at that time, we'll look at the amendments, the updated amendments. And the other amendments we want to bring, working with staff, I think, okay. Okay, so I think we're ready.
Again, I think that amendments will need to be, Mr. Lucas, when would amendments need to be due to you for consideration on the August 5th meeting?
If the committee would like them to be released in the packet the Friday before that meeting. The office would, the council office would need them ahead of July 31st, so the earlier next week. You can get those to us, the earlier we can get those packaged for the packet, but. You know, as we've been doing all along, since we've been meeting virtually, we've kind of been releasing packet supplements as, as we get materials, so. The earlier, the better, is always the answer.
But can we have a deadline, like, say, Wednesday noon, I mean, that sort of gives people time to formulate?
Yes, Wednesday, July 29th at noon would, would be fine.
And I would say that we're probably going to figure out what the order of events will be on, on August 5th. By Friday, July 31st, before the packet goes out, so that's when we decided the order of events for tonight was last Friday.
Can I just? Ask Beth Rosenbarger, you mentioned that you were. Taking some notes about some possible amendments, so the only thing that I noticed was that. The loading zones, the ones that are not 24/7, need to be noted as such, so can I just count on you to bring that amendment?
Yes, we wrote that one down, I wrote it down, thanks.
Thank you.
I would favor adjourning as soon as people are ready.
Okay, sorry, I was writing it out as well, okay. I think we're all set to adjourn, right?
As long as no other members have comments, yeah.
Okay, thanks to city staff and council staff for being here so late on a Wednesday. Okay, we're adjourned.